Good, all right. Okay, thank you, everyone. It is 7:02 PM on Thursday, September 2nd. We'll call this meeting in the lower County Township Board of Commissioners to order if you would join me for a pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, for a matter of the roll call tonight, we have four commissioners present. Commissioner Ron Arbiter is absent tonight, and I will note that we have Vice President Ward joining us on the hybrid platform tonight via Zoom online. We are continuing to run hybrid meetings in lower County Township, meaning residents have the option to come in person or attend virtually. As a matter of agenda modifications today, if the board is okay with it, I do know that we have some folks present to talk on specific items, and I don't want to have to have those folks sit through a conditional use hearing. I know that the attorney for one particular person spoke with township staff today, so I think we can handle that quickly, and I'd like to do that at this point rather than making them wait through the conditional use, because I think it'll only take a few minutes if that's all right with everyone. Okay, so in that case, we'll amend the agenda, we'll modify the agenda to take public comment on non-agenda topics now. So anyone have a comment on non-agenda topic? Thank you.
I'm not wearing a suit tonight, but my name is Craig Neely, and I'm an attorney. And would you like me to sign as my name and address, or my client's name and address?
I would do both and just speak into the mic.
All right, all right. We will be brief because I didn't speak to staff today. With me is Ron Speakman. Ron and Lindy Speakman own a property at 3307 Cypress Road, which intersects with Scenic View Road, where there was obviously a lot of flooding last night. I just want to advise the commissioners that we've been attempting, for actually over two years now, to obtain some kind of connection with the Army Corps of Engineers, which is responsible for what they've always called a conservation easement that goes behind the Speakmans property and behind their neighboring properties from behind. There's been very serious flooding there over the last many years, ever since the Speakmans bought the property many years ago. And in fact, I guess not coincidentally, on July 28, 2021, just over a month ago, I submitted an over-six-page formal complaint to the Army Corps of Engineers, hoping to get some response from them. Because we've documented through photographs and video, the ongoing problem, problems getting much more severe impacting properties well beyond the Speakmans property, but it is becoming a substantial, we think, danger to his property and also to the neighbors. And Mr. Speakman would have a lot of stories to tell you about what happened over the years and including what happened last night. And all we're here for is to ask the commissioners if we would be able to interface with township staff in our efforts to try to get the Army Corps of Engineers to address this issue. I know I have personally worked, walked most of that culvert from the Speakmans house going up where it actually is controlled flow to the south through a very deep culvert, but then as we get down towards the Speakmans house and the neighbor's house, it flattens out and flattened area is getting to the point where there's not even a channelized flow anymore, even in a non-rain condition. And so what we're here for is to ask if commissioners would grant authority to township staff to work with us. We still would want to take the lead on it in trying to pursue this, but we think that if we have some interaction with the township, that that may help us in terms of at least getting the Corps of Engineers to respond to us and come out unsuspected and hopefully try to develop some plan for the problem that we think is becoming worse and will continue to get worse if it's not addressed. And that's really all our request is.
Sure. I have no issue with that if anyone else has any.
I just have a couple of questions. Have, have you engaged either Congressman Wild or Senator Toomey on this?
No, and it is, great question, because when, Ron, I were just sitting here talking about that. We didn't think individually it would be as, as strong as if we did have the township. At least we can refer that we've been working with the township on this and then go to them and try to get some relief. And at this point, for us, it's just getting them to respond.
Yeah.
And they're not responding to us as individuals, and maybe with a joint effort, maybe they'd be able to at least get back to us and they could start some kind of dialogue.
Yeah, I don't have an issue interfacing with the township. The only thing I'll say is I don't know what weight we're going to carry. You know, I left because this week I got three emails from residents, and I love these emails because they always start off with, you know, as your constituent and your boss, this is what you're going to do. And, and it's about voting for or against vaccine passports. And I want to write back and say that, that's great. I have nothing to do with that. I never will have anything to do with that. That's either a state or a federal thing. In this situation, I'm very well aware of where you are and what the situation is. If township staff can help, awesome. I don't know what kind of weight it's going to carry, you know. I would hope that our federal representatives could get in or at least get a response for you from a federal agency, you know, something that's at the federal level. And unfortunately, because of the way that development came about and through the, the legal settlement and how everything got proportioned out to different forms of government, it can make it quite difficult. So we obviously feel your pain and hope that, you know, we can be of some assistance, if even minimal.
Bruce, do you have any comments along those lines?
Sure, and we look forward to trying to at least facilitate and reach out if we can. I know the water resource officers has tried on two attempts to contact the Army Corps electronically, so, yeah, we think it's, it's a good idea if we can try to help facilitate in some way.
Okay, so I make a motion that we authorize parties to work with the township manager and staff.
Second.
We have a motion in the second. Is there any additional board discussion? I'll just say for the benefit of anyone else, and the honest is another history, this, this was a development that was the result of a court judgment, and so there are actually cases right now where, you know, we're dealing with some developments that, you know, we take responsibility for because they went through our approval process, but in this case, this, this development did not go through our approval process. So I do want to do anything we can to work with the Army Corps of Engineers and any relevant other elected officials. So if that's okay with staff, I'll be yes. We have a motion in the second. Any additional board comment, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for a vote in favor of states by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Rich. And I'll also just ask if it's okay with, with Bruce, if we can have David, you know, interface, continued interface of Craig, so as Craig's point of contact. That'd be great, and I think David will be able to help facilitate as well with some, some contacts. Okay, great.
Thank you very much. Appreciate your support.
Thank you.
All right, moving on then to item number five, announcements and presentations, or there are announcements and presentations tonight. That takes us up to item number six. Oh, I'm sorry, any, any other public comment on any non-agenda topics? Okay, back to the regular agenda. That takes us up to 6.1. That's a conditional use hearing for Buckeye McConge Solar. So at this point, I will temporarily join this, adjourn this meeting of the lower County Township Board of Commissioners for the purpose of conducting a conditional use hearing on the application of Buckeye McConge Solar LLC on behalf of Buckeye Energy Services LLC, Buckeye Pipeline Company LP, and Buckeye Terminals LLC collectively known as Buckeye, for the properties located at 5274 Indian Creek Road, 3760 Tank Farm Road, 5336, 5346, 5454, and 5455 Buckeye Road. These six properties contain approximately 83.5 with five parcels in the I Industrial District and one in the O Orlick Office Research Light Industrial Center District. The tracks are located along the west side of East McConge Road, along Buckeye Road and Tank Farm Road. The conditional use application proposes a solar energy facility on approximately 50 acres of the six parcels. The surrounding area consists primarily of a Buckeye tank farm and a public school. Solar energy facility is permitted by conditional use in both the I Industrial District and the O Orlick Office Research Light Industrial Center District pursuant to sections 27-1203 and 27-1503 of the lower McConge Township zoning code. This hearing is being conducted in person as well as via the Zoom platform to maximize public participation. I also would like to note the presence of a court stenographer who is recording a transcript of this hearing, and at this point, I will turn the conduct of the hearing over to our solicitor to review the procedures for tonight's hearing.
Thank you so much. Could the applicant and their counsel just come up and identify themselves for record?
Sure.
Thank you.
Eric Schach from Fitzpatrick, Lunsen, Bubba.
Justin Manchester with Buckeye.
And if I could note, our engineer is from Rochester, so she is participating remotely, and I see that, I believe I see her. Several of them are, several of the participants online from Rochester are participating remotely.
Okay, are they in, Renee?
Can you guys hear me? This is Kelly Sullivan with Bergman.
Hi, Kelly.
Thank you, Kelly.
Hi.
And then it would be David Plant and Kathleen Connolly.
Yes, Kathleen is here.
Okay, is that everybody here?
Yes.
As President Byler noted, this is a conditional use hearing. My name is David Broman. I'm a solicitor for lower McConge Township, and also as indicated by our president, we have three members present in the room, and Vice Chair Ward, I Zoom for tonight's hearing. The conditional use is a use permitted by right in the zoning code. The applicant will be making a presentation as to how they meet the objective criteria and realize this is just a conditional use hearing at this stage. This is not a land development application that will be coming down the road. Can I ask if anybody on Zoom or in the room is here specifically for Buckeye? No. What I was going to do is just explain the difference between party status and public comment, but I, rest assured, no one from the public wants to become a party, but everyone is certainly available. I mean, invited to make public comment at the end of the presentation. Before we begin, I would just like to mark the township's exhibits, which are really procedural in nature. Township Exhibit One is the conditional use application dated June 14, 2021. Township Exhibit Two is a certification of newspaper, newspaper advertising. Township Exhibit Three is the certification of mail notification to those required to receive mail notification. Exhibit Township Four is the certification of property posting. Township Five is a memorandum dated June 23, 2021 from Carl Best, zoning officer to the lower Mary McConge Township Planning Commission. Township Exhibit Six is a letter dated July 6, 2021 from Brian McAdams, E.C.K.S. engineer, and Nathan Jones, Director of Community Development. Township Seven is a memorandum dated July 9, 2021 from Nate Jones to the lower McConge Township Planning Commission, and finally Township Eight is the Planning Commission Conditional Recommendation dated July 23, 2021. At this point, I'm going to turn it over to Mr. Schach for his presentation, and as I indicated, you're free to make an offer of proof, obviously with people affirming, but at this point, it's yours.
Thanks. Yeah, I, I think what I propose to do is I'll make an offer of proof with regard to each of the two witnesses' statements. There's probably a couple items I'd rather have them address directly because it's a little bit more complicated, not just the basic facts.
I would suggest then a court reporter swear in all of the witnesses at this time because the board may have questions for some of the other witnesses.
Okay. No, just this and then one online, but potentially three, so we'll just.
Yeah, let's swear all four.
Yeah.
Yes.
David, you're on mute.
Dave Plant, can you say yes?
Or, or no?
I guess that was a leading question. Could you answer, David?
Please rephrase.
Okay, I, I think we'll be fine with Kelly and Kathleen, and if something comes up, just address it. That'd be great. So as the solicitor indicated, to cover most of the basic facts, I'll make an offer of proof. My first witness would, would have been Justin Manchester, who's employed by Buckeye Pipeline and is the project manager for the solar energy project, and he's responsible for the proposed development of this facility and actually another facility not located in the township. We have submitted as Exhibit A1 and A2 documents that Mr. Manchester would have identified as the vesting needs, because as was indicated, there are multiple entities that own the properties that comprise the Buckeye facility, and also an authorization that would indicate that the applicant is authorized by the three ownership entities to make this application. And Mr. Manchester would explain that what will occur is that the ownership entities will lease the land that composes the project area to the applicant, and the applicant will be the lessee of the land, but the owner of the physical structures and equipment, mechanicals that make up the facility. Next, he would indicate that the land, as was mentioned, is all land that is proximate to the existing tank farm and related facilities for Buckeye, and that's reflected in, I believe it's Exhibit A6, which is the aerial. The aerial depicts the location of this property vis a vis the other surrounding properties. That's in red, and as you'll see, as was mentioned, the significant Buckeye facility would be to the east, and there is a school nearby. Otherwise, it's primarily vacant land, land that is farmed, and land that actually is already utilized in connection with the Buckeye facility.
Yeah, Renee, can you zoom in on a little bit more? Thanks.
Mr. Manchester would indicate that they've retained the firm of Bergman, which I'll discuss later, to prepare plans in connection with the conditional use and the land development. And the land, the land development plans, as your solicitor indicated, are currently before the township, and I believe we have a meeting upcoming next week to continue with that portion of the process. Mr. Manchester would indicate that, in his opinion, it's in the best interest of the township and a benefit to the public welfare for this facility to be permitted in this location. It is a car, obviously, an alternative energy source, and it, he'll go into more detail, but it is a program initiated by Buckeye to create these alternative energy sources, and its location is appropriate. The land, as was mentioned, is zoned Orlick and industrial, so facilities of this type, in his opinion, would be appropriate in the area, and in fact, that land otherwise would be available for an expansion of the existing Buckeye facilities, and, and this use is another utility and energy-related use. He believes the land is suitable for it. It was, it was suitable and reserved for potential expansion of the Buckeye existing facility, and as we'll demonstrate as we continue through the land development process, the land can easily support the proposed facility. The use is passive in nature, and in fact, likely more passive than the existing facilities out in that area, and many of the permitted uses that are allowed in those zoning districts. That if constructed, it would be operated in harmony with and in appropriate manner with the surrounding area for those same reasons, industrial area next to the existing Buckeye tank farm and related facilities, and therefore, in his mind, appropriate. And then a couple of questions I'd like to ask under Manchester, so he can provide the flavor of it. One of them is, this came up at the Planning Commission, I think it was mentioned otherwise. Can you just explain the ongoing relationship Buckeye has with the fire chief and what you've been doing in connection with this project to specifically address any concerns? Because I believe, as you'll explain, you've, you, because of the nature of the existing Buckeye facility, you, the entity maintains a close relationship already.
Yeah, so we, as everyone knows, we have an existing facility here that we've operated for quite some time, and we have a very good relationship with the fire department. We work with them regularly, have regular meetings with them with regard to our existing facility. We have had several discussions with them already about the solar, the proposed solar farm that we'd like to construct. We had an, an online meeting with them at first, and then we had an onsite meeting with them about a month ago, and we have another meeting set up with them later this month to continue discussing this project, the impact to them, and what we need to do to work with them in harmony with this project. We have added some scope to this project to benefit them, to allow them to handle the facility, you know, in a, in a better way. We're going to include some fire hydrants and some piping so that they can get the water that they need in a more convenient way as part of the project.
And is it your intention to continue to work with the fire chief to address any concerns that there may be with respect to this facility, access, service to the area, et cetera?
Yes, absolutely. We had agreed to continue the discussions with the, the fire department, and as we get into construction, I plan on having a regular check-ins with them onsite to make sure that we're building it the way that they need us to build it.
Okay. Another item that had come up, can you just explain how emergency contacts, for example, are done now and how will continue? Is it available 24/7, 365, et cetera? How is that handled today? And how will it be handled for this facility?
Yeah, so it'll, it'll be the same as it is today for the facility, so the existing operations and maintenance teams that are handling the tank farm will also be available for the solar farm in the neighboring property. So if anything comes up at any time, the same contacts that we have today, we'll, we'll handle the, the solar farm. So pretty simple there.
And can you just touch on, and I mentioned it, what's the reason for Buckeye pursuing this, this facility? Is there a program? And what, what is the underlying goal?
Yeah, so Buckeye has a, an, a green initiative, if you will, to look across our portfolio of all of our assets, whether it's existing facilities or existing land that we own, or acquiring new land or new facilities just across our entire corporation to, to reduce our carbon footprint, to look into more green energy sources, renewable energy sources, things like that. So this is part of that program that we're looking to explore, you know, that side of the energy world. So this, this is just one of many items that we're looking as a program.
And then lastly, the statements I made in the, in my introduction, would you adopt those and say that they all were accurate?
Yes.
Does any member of the Board of Commissioners have a question for this witness? I think this is a break on this witness.
Any questions for the witness?
I just have, I have one question, one statement. So just, to be clear, so there are three entities that own the property. This fourth company is the lessee and then owner-operator of the solar farm, correct?
Correct.
And then the other, the statement is, you know, I have in the past actually attended meetings between the fire department and Buckeye, so I can vouch for the, the spirit of cooperation that goes on to help provide safety, so I would only expect that it would continue moving forward, so.
Absolutely. Any other questions for the, for the witness?
Okay, the ordinance, I think, requires a, that it, the land be under single ownership. Okay, so is the lease agreement and so forth adequate to meet that requirement?
Yeah, so I spoke with the zoning officer, and all of the ownership entities are actually a subsidiary of the same Buckeye Partners LP. So in other words, they all are actually owned by the same entity ultimately, and I've talked to Justin. We, we can provide whatever proof Mr. Broman would like to do that, because what the relationship is, is all three of those are subsidiaries. However, they're not necessarily at the same level, so it's not as simple as Buckeye Partners LP and then these three entities below. There are other relationships and intervening companies, but at the end of the day, we believed that the ordinance was satisfied by Buckeye Partners LP, Buckeye Pipeline, pardon me, being the, being the owner of all the property. They just happen to be titled in several subsidiaries for purposes obviously unrelated to zoning. Buckeye McConge Solar, which is the tenant, is also a fourth subsidiary, and that will lease from the three entities, but ultimately, it's, it's almost leasing from itself because that too is a subsidiary of the, of the parent Buckeye entity.
Okay.
And, and we have no problem. He's, he's talked internally to the business people, and they just said, tell us what you need when, when we get to that point, and, and we will document it, but they gave us, for the purposes of this hearing, what we thought was kind of an appropriate explanation of what the relationship was.
Okay. Okay, and just out of curiosity, the, the fence around the, the solar panels, was that requested? Was that originated from Buckeye, or what's the?
The engineer can give you more detail if need be, but I can tell you what the answer is, is that there is an, an electrical code requirement that mandates that that fence surround the facility. So there was no, there was no choice. The fence that was proposed initially, I don't think it had the black slats in or for that. We, they proposed the fence that's required under the particular electrical code, and, and Kelly could give you more detail if you need it, but that's why that was proposed in the first instance. There's been discussions, and I believe we agreed at the last planning commission to, to do a fence that would satisfy the township's requirements, so long as that fence still met the applicable code requirement that they have to do for this facility.
Okay.
And Kelly, was I correct in that statement?
Yes, NEC 11031 requires that the fencing be at least seven feet tall. That's the National Electric Code.
I forgot my NEC code, so thank you.
And okay, so another concern I have is exactly what kind of ground cover is going to be put down because it's very significant associated with issues of stormwater runoff and so forth because, and all of the rain basically runs off the, the drip edge rather than covering the entire thing, and so would like to make sure there's a lot of biomass and so forth, and.
If you'd like, I could have Kelly answer that one also.
Well, we, we can defer that until she talks, then. That'd be fine.
That was one of the questions I was going to have her answer. I wasn't going to try to do that one myself.
Okay. And in the review letters, I, I had picked up that there wasn't ultimate right-of-way line shown on the plan, and all of the setbacks are supposed to be based on ultimate right-of-way lines, and I want to avoid confusion about that, so.
Yeah.
Again, Kelly.
Kelly will answer. I'll, I'll punt on that one, too.
Well, maybe I'll punt until Kelly's turn.
I'm, I'm here. I'm sorry, my internet's kind of struggling a little bit, so. What was the question?
We'll wait until, for a minute.
Okay.
I'll, I'll do a brief summary, Kelly, of the, of the, of the nuts. I'll do a brief summary, Kelly, of the nuts and bolts and then I, as we talked about, I'll have some questions that I prefer you answer directly.
Okay.
And any other questions for this witness? Okay.
I just have one question, how do you fight a fire at a solar plant?
Say it again, I'm sorry.
How do you fight a fire at the solar plant?
So the panels themselves aren't much of a fire concern. The equipment would be, you know, if you had a concern, the equipment would be like the transformers and things like that that you might have to fight and it'd be very similar to fighting any other fire at any other utility connection or transformer or anything like that. It's, the equipment is pretty standard transformers and things like that.
Does the fire department, I'm sorry, does the fire department have access to where they need access in the event there were, there was a fire?
Yes, absolutely. And like I mentioned earlier, we're going to continue to work with them to make sure that they get whatever access they need to, like the fencing, for example, we'll make sure that we give them whatever access they need for that, put in the appropriate gates and things like that.
And then finally, they have the equipment necessary to fight such a fire?
Absolutely.
If the electrical stuff is, I'm not sure who to ask, so, okay. I was wondering what kind of arrangements, okay, this is going to be connected to the, to PPNL services or PPNL lines?
Do you want to answer this one? The grid connection or?
Either way, I can speak to it and then Kelly can always expand.
Okay, so.
So do you want to explain the?
How does the interaction between your facility and PPNL lines that if their power goes down, then the lineman would appreciate if it's not electrified, so.
So, yeah, so this system is a grid-connected system, so we will be interconnecting with EPL. They have a, I guess it's on the southern side of the larger arrays there, there is an existing 69 KV transformer that we're going to be tying into as part of our interconnection agreement with EPL. So anything that we generate goes to the grid. It does not go, it's not like a net metered setup or something like at your house where it would feed your, your house. It's not going to feed our facility directly, it's feeding the grid. So it's like, almost like a standalone power plant, if you will.
And PPNL will have the ability remotely to be able to knock your facility off the line if it needs to be.
Yes, we'll tie into EPL there and they have the ultimate. Yeah, there, it's basically like a standalone power, power plant that they can turn on, off or whatever they need.
And you can't do this facility unless EPL approves it, correct?
Correct. And we're underway with them for the interconnection process and we've been underway with them for quite some time, so.
Okay.
Yep.
You know, one last question that maybe you're the best one is, what, what amount of energy, if you build the array that's on this plant, what amount of energy does it produce?
So I'm going to punt that one to Kelly, she has some better hears.
Okay, then I'll let her answer that one, otherwise that's all.
So it'll be producing 8.30 megawatts AC, which is about, what is it, 164 homes per megawatt, so it's, it'll power 1,361 homes to put that into some sort of substance.
Okay, so what I did similarly with Mr. Manchester, my next witness would be Kelly Sullivan. She works for a firm called Bergman in Rochester and she is the senior project manager and has been in the utility industry for 12 years. Bergman itself has been in existence for 40 years, specializes in part in, in the utility industry and has done 500 megawatts of solar energy facilities in six states at this point. As was mentioned, the properties involved are about 80-some acres, but the panels themselves with their equipment covers about, I think it was 31 acres, she would indicate. The plan, a plan was submitted as required by the ordinance, prepared by Bergman, a site plan, and that site plan was actually part of the land development plan set that is under review by the township and I believe that is C3 and that is up on the board. The improvements that are shown consist of over 2,900 solar panels, conduit, converters, transformers, a power collector substation, an interconnect to the adjoining substation that Mr. Manchester discussed, transmission lines, access driveway, security fence and stormwater facilities. The panels will be installed using a fixed tilt mount and one of the comments we had had was, was provide a detail of that. If you go to the next exhibit, that details how these panels are installed and those panels are 15 feet in height at a maximum. One of the specific requirements in your ordinance is not to exceed 20 feet, so that requirement is met. The panel array will be surrounded by the fence as we discussed and as Ms. Sullivan indicated, is required by the code. The plan depicts access to the facility both by providing an access driveway on the property that is separated and roughly on the south and there are existing improvements on the opposite side of the roadway that allow access to those facilities off of the existing Buckeye plant that is there today. And that is all depicted on the site plan and the land development plan. After construction, the facility is remotely monitored so that any change in, for example, power output from a, from a panel, any of those types of things are remotely monitored 24/7. A visitor, a maintenance visitor will come roughly every three months, was essentially a light utility truck and will visit the site to check out anything and make sure that it's performing optimally. Maintenance is performed and of the property essentially by mowing and I'll have Ms. Sullivan talk through what goes below those panels. The only maintenance that is required is to keep the vegetation at an appropriate height. Otherwise, for the most part, unless something breaks, she would indicate, there is no other ongoing maintenance unless there is something that, that is no longer functioning properly other than the vegetation. The facility doesn't generate, generates almost no noise and, and certainly she, she would state that at the property line, any noise that might be from a generator or such would be virtually inaudible. There is a buffer requirement in your zoning ordinance, one of the other specific requirements, and as you mentioned, there is a buffer being provided on the plant and Kelly will talk about adding that, the additional information. One of the requirements is the property be in excess of 10 acres. As we indicated, it's 83, but about, over 30 of it at least is dedicated to the actual array itself and would meet that requirement. Another specific requirement is the land development submission is required and her firm, Bergman, submitted that land development submission. Screening is proposed for the, for the mechanical equipment. A landscaping plan is being, is included and being reviewed as part of the land development submission.
What mechanical equipment?
Pardon me?
What mechanical equipment?
Kelly, can you, can you indicate what mechanical equipment requires the buffer in the, from the ordinance?
The screening.
The screening, pardon me, thank you.
Actually Kathleen might have a better answer for that, but Kathleen?
Kathleen, could you answer that? What mechanical equipment is on site that we will need to screen?
While we're waiting for Kathleen, just explain what Kathleen does on the project.
Sure. She is our electrical engineer for the project. Well, since she's not here, there, there's transformers essentially that are pad-mounted transformers that the solar cells, I believe, feed into and that's where the energy is converted. So those would be the items that would need to be screened.
Sorry, I was struggling with my, that is correct, Kelly, and there will obviously be inverters as well, but yeah, that's the majority of the equipment.
Okay, could you, we could, I couldn't understand you. Can you just repeat what you just said about there's something in addition to the transformer, I think you indicated?
Yes, of course. So we'll have a few different pieces of just electrical equipment that will be screened. So inverters, which is what converts the DC power from the modules into AC power, we'll have switchboards and transformers.
So switchboards, inverters and transformers would be the equipment that needs to be screened. Ms. Sullivan would indicate that based upon her review, the project is otherwise in accordance with other township ordinances and the comprehensive plan being a fairly passive industrial energy use in the industrial and orlic zoning districts. She would indicate that from a engineering standpoint, there's no issues with utilizing this land for the proposed use and I'll have her talk more about the stormwater management component of that, that there's no other relief to her knowledge that's needed under the zoning ordinance other than these, the conditional use. There's no public water sewer facilities needed for this, there obviously is electricity, the, the utility that is required. And with respect to traffic, there would be no traffic, adverse traffic impact based upon the fact that this, the site itself generates almost no traffic alone and in fact, the majority of the folks involved with the project are already located at the Buckeye facility and she would indicate that she's not aware of any adverse impact that the facility would have. So with that, Kelly, a few questions then. Can you go through in a little bit more detail the seed mix and plantings, et cetera, that are utilized on the ground and go underneath the panels and also talk about stormwater management, what you do and what's, what is in process in connection with the land development plan?
Sure, so the seed mix that we're using or proposing is a native wildflower and grass mix. The town had indicated earlier at a different meeting that they wanted something that would, you know, promote bees and was aesthetically pleasing, so that's why we went with that mix. As far as stormwater management, there's very little impact that solar sites have. So what they do during construction is they limit, you know, only five acres at a time will be under construction and then as far as like area that's covered afterwards, it's very minimal, it's just the, you know, the inverters and transformers, so no, no retention ponds or anything of that sort is needed. However, I believe on the exhibit where we're showing the panels, what is it, I think it's exhibit two, you can see that we have what are called level spreaders and that is to help treat any runoff from the solar panels themselves before it then, you know, goes into the ground. I believe that's all I have for that. Are there any questions?
I didn't hear what kind of seed mix it was.
Oh, can you repeat what type of seed mix, please?
Sure. It is, let me flip back up. It is a native wildflower and grass mix, so it's northeast native wildflower and grass mix.
Okay, I guess I have a concern about that or a question anyway.
Sure.
We have trouble getting wildflower mixes to last for three years without worrying about solar panels and so forth decreasing the amount of water getting to them and the amount of sun getting to them and it seems to me that whatever seed mix is used, it should be a, one with a large biomass and deep roots that works better for absorption of the water since it is not consistently distributed and so forth. And so, and personally, I am not as concerned about the aesthetics of it as I am the functionality. So if it's a prairie grass mix or whatever, that doesn't matter, I'm more concerned about the performance of holding the ground, being able to survive through drought and wet conditions, have deep roots and prevent as much runoff as possible.
I believe that Buckeye and Bergman were fairly indifferent to the mix and I think it was a planning, it came up through the planning process. So I'm not, not to kick it back to you guys, but, but I, whatever, Kelly, am I correct that, that for the most part, whatever's decided upon with the township input, as long as it's not something that you would determine to be detrimental in terms of growth, you know, shading of the things, you could work with that, correct?
That's correct.
And we're happy to continue to look at the options as we go through the land development process, working with landscape architects, so it's fine.
Okay.
Okay, so.
No concerns, it was just, there was a dialogue and essentially Bergman and Buckeye said, we're, as long as it works from the standpoint of, of being a mix that is appropriate for underneath, they'll do, they'll do whatever.
Okay, and so, yeah, it's just bringing it up now because I assume what kind, what kind of ground cover there is, does impact MPDS permits and so forth as far as how much runoff there's going to be and so forth, so. Figured it's better to address it early, earlier rather than later.
Is that an issue at all, Kelly?
No, it should be fine, we can rerun any calculations, you know, as needed.
Okay.
And then the second question that I think was a holdover was, can you talk about the right-of-way? You will be depicting that on the plans, correct?
Yes. Which right-of-way, the pipeline right-of-way or?
No, the roadway, the ultimate right-of-way of the roadway wasn't depicted on the plan.
Yes, that'll be added.
And they believe that the set, they believe the measurements work, so there won't be a change, but theoretically, the proposal would be to meet the setback. If, you know, if something shifts a little bit, I don't think they're looking for a variance from that, but they believe it meets, it will meet it when it is put on.
And are you proposing to offer the ultimate right-of-way for dedication?
It was requested, I, I don't know where they are in the discussion, but I do think that, that the engineer indicated, they didn't see that as being an issue.
Okay, well, and the main reason that we would be interested in it is because Buckeye wrote, that intersection of Buckeye and Brookside could use some improvements for some truck traffic generating facilities in the area, whoever that might be.
Are there those? Yeah. Yeah, I think Bergman was looking at it, but the indication that we had was that it was not, it wouldn't be an issue and it could be worked out through the land.
Okay, but so, yeah, I mean, the concern is putting in left turn lanes for trucks and stuff like that, that we could use more right-of-way to be able to. So. Okay.
And then Kelly, is all of the other information that I indicated you would have testified to, can you affirm if that was accurate?
Yes, that's all correct.
Eric, was that your last witness?
No, yeah, that was my last witness. I think we've covered all the specific requirements.
Is any member of the board have any other questions for either Eric or either of the witnesses? Now, I think now would be the time to see if there's any public comment.
In the cases, yes. We just asked if you can come up and just speak into the mic because we do have the court stenographer here and we are broadcasting this out and recording it.
I have one question.
And I'd like it verified because I really don't trust Buckeye. They messed me up last time when they got our variance for the propane tanks. They were supposed to work with me. They basically wanted me to give them right to use anything they wanted on my property. So I'm not gonna, I'm not, I don't trust Buckeye too much. But it says here, the property is located at 5274 Indian Creek Road. On 5260, 64, my neighbor is 5286. There is no 5274. Now, is there something in there that will give them legal rights to come in and take some of the properties or?
I, nothing that they're doing tonight in the conditional use or land development would give them rights to property that they do not own.
But it says.
I can say that.
Seventy-four.
I'll clarify that.
They say they own it.
Yeah.
But I don't know where it would be on Indian Creek Road.
But we'll verify that. But I, rest assured, they won't be acquiring through this process any property they don't currently own.
According to the records we have provided, that 5274 is owned by Buckeye Energy Services LLC and is a 10.621 acre parcel. So it would have to be one of the parcels on the roughly the north side of the roadway?
I believe so.
So it's on the other side of the tracks from Indian Creek Road.
Yeah, I'm not sure how they assigned it, rest. I'm just going off of the tax records.
It's a tax parcel.
Well, it will always have to be right where the propane tanks are, where their tracks are. Because if that's right where I live.
It's one of the parcels that he's indicating is that involved in the plan?
I, I don't know.
I'm doing that now.
I, I would encourage you to perhaps me with your neighbor and show them exactly where it's going to be on your road. That'd be a good idea.
If we could, Mr. Solicitor, could we have his name and address, the record?
Thank you. I should have asked for that. Sir, may I please have your name and address for the record? Thank you. You can just state it. You can just state it yourself.
Oh, David Hotenstein.
Yeah, but you click.
H O T T E N S T E I N.
And I'm sorry, you reside where, sir?
Fifty-two, sixty-four, Indian Creek Road.
Thank you.
I'm sorry, what's your address?
Fifty-two, sixty-four, Indian Creek.
I just have a question on David's wife, Jane.
Could you pull the mic closer?
I'm David Hotenstein's wife, Jane, and I just have a simple question. Maybe you already answered it. When you talked about the right of way and you were talking about the ultimate roadway was not on the plan. I just want to know why wasn't it on the plan?
I think the engineer just missed it. They'll add, it, it's a dimensional requirement in the latter plan.
There's a legal right of way and an ultimate right. And so they probably showed the legal right of way. But the ultimate right of way is based on the township ordinance as far as, okay, Buckeye Road, for instance, is an arterial road. So the ultimate right of way would be 50 feet from the center line.
I just want to make sure that, is that the correct term, ultimate roadway?
Ultimate right of, right of way, not roadway.
Okay, ultimate what?
It's right of way. It's a right of ways. It's not the road itself. It's a certain amount of land off of the road that the township would have the right to go in and do maintenance, do improvements is given to the township by the landlord. As it's really not the roadway itself.
When, when you drive down roads and you see paths that are set back some from the road, then that's typically in the right of way for the road, but it's not in the road.
Do I need my, sign my name on here?
No, ma'am, you identified yourself. Thank you. Eric, would you, would you like to move your exhibits?
Yes. I moved for the admission of A1 through A6.
You know what? I'm not sure we identified them all. Would you mind just quickly identifying A1 through A6?
Yeah, A1 was the deeds, A2 was the authorization, A3 was the site plan, A4 was the panels, A5 was the stormwater management plan, C006, or the erosion control plan, excuse me. And then C, C, A6 was the aerial.
President, any objection to the admission of those exhibits? Seeing none, those exhibits are accepted into evidence. Eric, any problem with township exhibits one through eight?
None.
They're into evidence. So, Mr. President, I think that now includes the conditional use hearing unless there's any other public comment, Renee.
Any additional public comment? Have we checked online? If there's anyone attending online who'd like to offer a public comment, please indicate by raising your hand or typing in the chat box.
No. Okay, so this would be the time for the board to discuss, deliberate, and decide whether to approve the conditional use application before the board or to table for another night discussion. It's up to the pleasure of the board.
Yeah, motion to approve the conditional use for Buckeye Solar.
For Buckeye Solar on behalf of Buckeye Energy Services, Buckeye Pipeline Company, and Buckeye Terminals for the construction, ownership, and operation of the solar energy facility located at 5274 Indian Creek Road, 3760 Tank Farm Road, 5336, 5346, 5454, 5455, Buckeye Road. That's it. I was subject to the conditions of the planning commission.
I second it.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any board discussion? Is there any public comment? Either in person or online? If there's any public comment online, please indicate so in the chat room or raise your hand. Seeing none online, hearing none in person, then we'll call for a vote. So it'll be a roll call. So Renee, if you can please call the roll call.
Aye.
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 Aye. Okay, the motion to approve the conditional use application of Buckeye McConaughey Solar has been granted.
Thanks for your time.
Yeah, thank you.
So for members of the public, a written decision will be considered by the board in 45 days from today. And that closes the public hearing.
I, I just did want to say, I didn't want to muddle the conditional use hearing, but just for a matter of context for anyone watching at home, this property is interesting in that this was a property that was subject to our zoning maneuvers a few years ago where we, one of the subjects where we removed warehouses from certain zoning codes. So just a few years ago, this property could have well been developed with a warehouse, although it is constrained. It could have potentially, as we see more constrained sites, see pressure for warehouses in the Lehigh Valley. This could have very well been developed with a, with a warehouse, but the township did remove that use from this zone. And so now instead of a warehouse in a particularly terrible location, you know, we're seeing a pretty low, a very low impact use. That's much, much more community friendly than, than another potential logistics terminal that would bring substantial truck traffic with it.
Thank you, Eric. Have a good evening.
Okay, moving on then to item 6.2. This is resolution 2021-40, preliminary final plan approval for advanced healthcare. Twenty-one dash double oh seven. All right, we have the applicants here. Nate, if you can walk us through things. Nate and Engineer McAdam.
Yep, Mr. President, this is the land development plan for the previously approved conditional use for, for Allentown SNF Advanced Healthcare Rehabilitation Facility, surgical rehabilitation facility, 10-acre lot, 46-unit, 46-bed, I should say, 46-bay temporary care center. We have spent a fair amount of time working with the applicants on matters revolving around design. As everyone can see on the plans pulled up there, you have a single-story structure there which takes its frontage off of Minesight Road. There's accessory buildings in addition to the main structure. Those accessory buildings will serve the main structure. There is a private path network for use for individuals who will be convalescing at the site after receiving surgery for orthopedics or what have you. And actually, Renee, I don't know if you have the landscaping plan up, but the site is incredibly buffered with existing trees and proposed trees to maintain the high quality of life for the neighbors next door. The stormwater for the site is immediately to the north and west of the structure. This is a tricky watershed, but following the review process, the township engineer has certified as well as, I believe, at this point, and I'll leave this to the applicant's engineer to speak on behalf of the Lehigh County Conservation District about the level of progress they've made on their approvals. But then last but not least, over at the corner, you will see a public trail that does connect to frontage improvements along Minesight Road so that residents in the general area have the ability to walk while the weather allows them to throughout the neighborhood as our plans call for, both regionally as well as locally. I should note that there is a fairly large utility easement that runs through the site. That utility easement, aside from the trails, will remain vacant. And the site will be served by sewer, which will connect to Tree Line Drive just to the north and west there. Beyond that, I don't have anything else to add unless the engineer does.
No, I, I don't have anything dramatic to add. I will say that we have been coordinating with the applicant's engineer on quite a few of the design elements. The review letter that you have before you does have some, you know, comments in it, none of which will dramatically affect the project itself. I will note that I believe they've made applications to the Conservation District.
Yes, that's correct.
The MPDS permit. I suspect that as, as that review progresses, between our comments and the Conservation District will dial in the basin. I know there's been discussions with PennDOT regarding the entrance. You know, I, I don't foresee anything changing dramatically as those two approvals are obtained. And the waivers that are part of the approval resolution are fairly minor in nature and frankly, not all that uncommon. Requesting preliminary final approval, requesting a waiver from frontage widening, requesting curbing, waiver from curbing along the street frontage. There is no curbing elsewhere. There's some curbing, at least a lane, but the rest of the road is basically just got a shoulder. We're okay with what's proposed. Basin side slopes to allow three to one rather than four to one. And then another waiver to allow the internal trail to pedestrian access to be non-ADA compliant. And as discussed with the applicant's team, both in Zoom meetings as well as planning commission, the understanding is that the internal walkways are both for people to use just in general, but also there are portions that will be used for rehabilitation. And therefore, some of them are a little steeper than the ADA requirements would permit. And as it was explained, they actually do that on purpose because as part of rehab, sometimes you need to walk up something that's a little bit steeper. Other than that, I'm confident that everything in my review at least can be addressed. Unless the applicant's team has any specific items that need to be discussed. I, I'm hopeful that my letters will comply and just keep moving forward.
Yeah, I, I do have one more thing to add. It's not shown on the plan here. However, the applicant did submit architectural renderings of the site and the planning commission zoning officer myself did find them to be very handsome and in compliance, full compliance with our design guidelines for the township. So it will match the neighborhood nicely and fit in with the code that we have adopted as of 2018.
Uh, okay, I actually think it's a very nice plan. I have presented a few issues, but I think really the issues were more with flaws in the zoning ordinance than with the the plan itself, that I think it is a good fit in that particular location and so forth. As such, I would like to make a, make a motion that we approve the resolution 202140 for preliminary final approval for advanced healthcare as written.
Second.
We have a motion in a second. Is there any board discussion on this application? Is there any?
One thing, it has been an absolute pleasure to work with the township and your staff. We started this process last fall before my client purchased the property. You are very fortunate to have a very professional, competent, and responsive staff. That's not always the case, and we understand you do have a lot of active development projects. So we're very grateful that this project was given a great deal of attention. The staff told us things that were of concern, pedestrian connectivity, architecture, and my client was proactive, we think, in addressing those things. And we're very appreciative of the treatment we received and look forward to getting started in construction as soon as we can. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Assuming the vote goes well.
Right. Yeah, but, but just quickly, you know, I, I'll say we, we do, and we know this, and we're very proud of that. But, but I will say it's all, it's also a two-way street. You know, we, we appreciate developers who reach out to us proactively and are willing to accept that proactive feedback from our staff. So, you know, thank, thank you for that likewise. But we do know that, you know, great job, Nate. Legal, engineering, administration, thank you, everyone. So we do have a motion on the table. Is there any additional public comment, either in person or online? Seeing none, then we'll call for a vote. Those in favor state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries four, one, with one vote online and one vote from the wings of the, of the room. So motion carries four, zero. Thank you. Thank, thank you.
Sure, thank you.
And in mentioning, you know, staff, I also wanted to, to mention the planning commission as well. We do have a particularly sophisticated, I think, planning commission, and we're very proud of the work that they do as well, ushering projects through, giving us in, in almost all cases, you know, very complete projects for us to consider at the board level. Thank you, everyone.
Thank you very much.
What's, what's your timeline here?
So we, a little bit of work to do on the plan. We have some outside, what's really, I think, HOP is going to be the thing that determines when we can get started, but.
Conservation District's already proved the first step of it administratively. We have some technical comments. We just received PennDOT comments. So they're looking hopefully to be in spring.
All right, fantastic. Reach out when you're cutting a ribbon. Get someone out there. All right, thank you.
Great. Thank you. Have a good night, everyone.
Okay, moving on then to item number 6.3. This is consideration to authorize advertisement of an amendment to Chapter 21 Streets Sidewalks.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're asking for your consideration to allow for the advertisement of the update to Chapter 21. As we spoke at several workshop meetings and circulated the draft of this, adds definitions for buffer yard owner pathway, kind of clears that up so it's consistent, removes the bike path pedestrian walkway definition and updates that pathway language throughout. We did have some feedback from Commissioner Robert. We want to make sure in this draft, as we move forward, we have some like language in 402 number three. So it's consistent and includes swales as.
So it's consistent and includes swales as the rest of the language you see before you. And then just this ordinance update reaffirms the, you know, property owner's responsibility to make sure they maintain these walking paths now on the reverse frontage.
Motion to authorize advertisement of an amendment to Chapter 21 Streets Inside.
Second. We have a motion, second, is there any board discussion? Any public comments where we're down to one? Anything online?
Down to one there too.
We're down to one there too. All right. Seeing and hearing none, then we'll call for our votos in favor, state so by saying aye. Motion carries, thank you. 6.4, we have three action items here, consideration of three park memorial applications. So let's start off with 6.4.1. This is at East Texas Park for the Shock family. And in doing this, if you can just overview what Bruce, what the, what the park memorial program is for the benefit of folks in the public.
Definitely, and we appreciate all of these individuals you see before you this evening, choosing to memorialize a family member, loved one. Oftentimes it has passed away and they choose the option to, of course, memorialize in one of our parks. And that include, that could include, you know, planting of a tree, putting in a memorial plaque, a bench or all of those items. So we receive these on occasion. They work through the township process that includes a review by staff and several other items per the township policy. And as you'll see with each of these, Renee has kind of indicated where these go in our parks. And a lot of times we hear feedback that these parks were special and in nature to those family members or loved ones in the area of the township. So we always appreciate to get these and, you know, that's kind of an overview of the park memorial program.
All right, thank you. So we do have item 6.4.1 in front of us. This is a memorial at East Texas Park. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve.
We have a second.
Second.
We have, we do have a motion and a second, and I do want to mention that this memorial is in honor of Andrew Joseph Shock, who sadly succumbed after a long battle with a rare liver cancer for six years before sadly passing away on January 3rd, 2020 at the age of 29. So we were very happy that the family chose to memorialize Andrew in this fashion. Motion to second, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you. Moving on to 6.4.2. This is Prater Park for a memorial from the Fosselman family and neighborhood.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, I have a second.
Second.
Second by Vice President Ward. We do have a motion and a second. Is there any board discussion? I'll say this is, this will be a memorial in honor of Peter Fosselman, Commissioner Higgins.
Yeah, just a real quick question, Renee, I know in the application, there was a question about the amount. Did, was enough submitted to cover or did they go to option number two? They had, okay, so they're not going to the secondary option for funding there? That's all I wanted to, thank you.
Thank you. We do have a motion, a second, any additional board discussion, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votos in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Actually, I will say something real quick. So, so that one obviously is for Peter Fossman, the son of our former township manager, Bruce Fossman. And, you know, one of the parts of doing these things, it's interesting to read the requests. And, you know, that request came from people not even from here who just, you know, played pickleball with Peter and his mother. And if anybody knows Patty, she is a very accomplished athlete, much better than Bruce ever was or would hope to be. But it shows the impact that people have on one another, and I think this is a really nice tribute to Peter and the Fossman family there at Prater Park where our pickleball courts are. So I look forward to those being put in.
Thank you, Brian. We, any additional public comment? I already did.
Yep.
Okay, we're good. Moving on to 6.4.3. This is for a park memorial in Shepherd Hills Park in honor of Patrick Gillette. He was a resident who grew up in the Shepherd Hills neighborhood. And as Bruce mentioned, these are often folks who have connections to particular parks and his family notes that him and his loved ones enjoyed spending lots of, they say countless hours enjoying that particular playground. So this would be a park memorial Shepherd Hills Park by the Gillette family in honor of Patrick Gillette.
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, we have a second. We have a motion of second, any additional board discussion, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, state so by saying aye.
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 Thank you. Moving on then to 6.5 is consideration of public hydrants along the Sauerkraut Lane Extension.
Thank you, as discussed at the workshop with the construction of the Sauerkraut Lane Extension, the plan calls for five fire hydrants along that new public roadway. We are requesting that the board consider making those public fire hydrants. And this is the process for that to start the paperwork with the authority.
Move to approve, second.
We do, we do have a motion, a second, is there any board discussion? Now I'll just say briefly, I have no problem. This is a, this is a very, this is an administrative action that's very common, but I just said I would mention anytime we're considering action relative to the Sauerkraut Lane Extension that I want to absolutely ensure as this project keeps moving forward towards buildout. Much anticipated buildout, I'll note that we are absolutely positive that we're doing everything we can to make sure that we're appropriately signing this new road. Because if we don't, I am absolutely convinced that this is going to make some of the truck issues in the middle residential heart of the township worse. As we know, a lot of these drivers from out of the area are following their GPS. So it's just absolutely imperative that we have the combination of both, both preventative and also proactive signage in this area. So not just, you know, do not turn right, do not go straight right towards the Borough of McCongee or straight into the residential heart of the township. But we also have proactive signage, you know, establishing truck routes, saying this is the way that you get out of our township appropriately via Route 100 and the bypass to all points, north, south, east and west via the, the Turnpike Route 22 and I-78. So I just want to make sure at any and all opportunity I have to say this, that I want to make absolutely sure that we're aggressively signing this new road that's really being built to service the new warehouses in the western portion of township. So any, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Takes us on to item, well, we did item number seven. Item number eight, written communication manager vital.
We have no items this evening.
Item number nine, this is appointments to various boards, committees and commissions. Item 9.1, we are tasked of appointing one individual to the planning commission to fill the vacancy with a term to expire January 1st, 2025.
Motion to appoint Nihal Raval, if I'm pronouncing that right, to fill the vacancy on the planning commission with a term to expire January 1st, 2025.
Second.
We do have a motion and a second. I'll ask at this point for any board discussion.
I, I'll just say that I think all the candidates were very good. Mr. Petrell is here, he was one of the candidates. I felt Mr. Raval just was a little bit better than everybody else, and I think adds an interesting dynamic with his background to the planning commission. I hope that the others will stay involved and also still be interested should another opening be come on the planning commission or anyplace else. I know Charlie, you're a big, you know, interest in open space preservation and, you know, the what's the EAC? I want to say the ERA, it's not the ERA, it's EAC. The EAC always needs members that help point out where we should be doing things like that. So there's plenty of opportunities to volunteer and get involved. So I appreciate everybody's interest.
Thank you, Brian. And I'll just say I was prepared to nominate Charlie tonight, but we do have a motion, a second. I'll agree with Commissioner Higgins that we did have two, well, we actually had three well qualified candidates, but two exceptionally several well qualified candidates. But my 1A and 1B were the gentlemen nominated and Charlie, I think we would have been well served by either one. And I'll just reiterate, as I've done several times, I've been so lucky to do several times over the last several years that we're, we're lucky to have a township with such a deep bench of talent from our, our residents. We've been in this situation more than once where we've had only one slot and more than one well qualified excellent candidate wanting to serve. And it's the worst thing in the world when we just don't have space for them. So while I was prepared to nominate Charlie Petrell tonight, you know, I'll be voting in favor of, of the gentleman nominated by Commissioner Higgins and encourage Charlie to apply again for the next vacancy.
I would say there's always openings on the Audit Advisory Committee. Nobody wants that. And what's the other one? Code, something code that.
Building, building code of appeals.
It hasn't been like 17 years or something like that.
You're not a contractor and you're not an accountant, right? Yeah, we need, we contractors and accountants. Okay, so we do, we do have a motion and a second. I will also mention, you know, in what would have been my nomination of Charlie, he was the recommendation of Tom Byall, the planning commission chair as well. And I know I'm talking to Tom that he, he was between the two as well. So, but he did land on the side of Charlie, but I do respect a little of the board here. So we do have a motion, a second, any public comment? Do you have anything you'd like to say? Thank you. Thank you. Appreciate that.
Hope so.
Definitely.
Not with this guy, but the rest of us.
I'll be gone. Yeah, yeah. We have a motion, a second. There's no additional public comment. I'll call for our votos in favor, states of by saying aye.
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 Motion carries. I'll say on an individual level, you know, we are looking for folks who are interested in getting involved in advocacy for the open space referendum. So if you're interested in that, shoot me an email and I'll give you some information on a group that's coalescing to, to promote that. That's going to be the next step in the historic preservation efforts that have been happening in the township over the last eight years. So, thank you. Moving on then to item number 10, this is approval of minutes of previous meetings, 10.1, August 5th, 2021. Has everyone had the chance to review the August 5th meeting?
Move to approve.
Motion to approve, second by Commissioner Higgins, motion of second, any board discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. August 19th, 2021, has everyone had the opportunity to review, we have a motion to approve.
Move to approve. I will be abstaining, I was not in attendance.
Give that to Mari, Bruce is abstaining.
As am I.
Oh, it's just me. Yeah, I will second. Does that mean we can't vote on them with two people? All right, we will table this, we'll punt this.
That's the next one.
Yeah, yeah, okay. All right, okay. We'll punt the August 19th, 2021 meeting minutes. Carry over.
Well, we carrying it over doesn't do any good because there were only two people here. And so.
Yeah, we'll never be able to. Yeah.
Yeah, it was.
Wearing a little pickle.
Yeah. Oh, it was an only two person.
Yeah, there'll never be three you were able to vote on.
Right. And they were technically minutes of a non-core meeting.
You really can approve the minutes. You don't have to abstain because you weren't here.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, and the other part of it, without being a voting meeting, nothing official actually happened. So I'm not voting on minutes that have any bearing on it.
We can unofficially approve the meeting minutes for unofficial meeting. We have a second by, by Commissioner Higgins. We have a motion, a second, board discussion. Any, any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion.
Aye.
Thank you. Takes us on to approvals of transfers, bill lists and payroll, good catch. Manager Vital, if you want to take us through the bills?
Thank you, we have the following for your consideration this evening. The general fund, $641,202.94. Sewer fund, $157,094.43. The capital projects fund, $381,998.80. The liquid fuels fund, $22,292.83. The payroll, $291,955.53. The developers escrow, $83,619.56 for a total, $1,578,164.09. I'd just like to say that this bill list also included those interim checks since we didn't conduct a business authorization approval on the 19th.
Move to approve, second.
Motion is second, any board discussion? Public comments? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. And just quickly say, as I always do, the entirety of the bill list, et cetera, is always available for the public to review on the posted agenda by the end of business day and the Monday during the week of any scheduled township board of commissioners meeting. Takes us on to item number 12, Departmental Matters, Engineers, Engineer McAdam.
Thank you, Mr. President, I have nothing to report.
Thank you. 12.2, Planning Department.
Mr. President, I just have two items for the board for consideration this evening. They were from our prior meeting. They involve reductions of security for Stone Hill Meadows. The first resolution, Resolution 2021-40 is for the release of $7,600. That would be two recreation fees for two new homes at Stone Hill Meadows that have gotten their building permits in the month prior. So it would be for a release of $7,600, reducing the sum of the funds held for security to $121,600.
Move to approve.
We have a motion, a second, any board discussion? Public comments? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
The second resolution, 2021-41 is for public improvements that have been completed due to the satisfaction of the township engineer review at the site and inspection. This is the release in the amount of $55,396. That would be the amount to be released. The and the sum that will remain will be $819,483.68.
Move to approve, second.
Motion is second, any board discussion? Public comment? Hearing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Anything else, Director Jones?
No, sir, nothing else this evening, other than that we will be having two planning commission meetings in the month of September due to the heavy load. So that will be the two Tuesdays in September. That'll be September, the, sorry, it'll be September the 14th and September the 21st, two planning commission meetings.
How are we looking on the look back timeline coming to us?
We are trying to find time to fit it into the planning commission's agenda.
Right.
I think a lot of that will depend yet again on what the next month brings in October. But we have, I believe, eight items, four and four on each meeting.
Understood.
For the September meeting.
I think it's coming, what, the first meeting in January? For us to look at it, right?
Yeah, I was gonna say, I somewhat selfishly would like to get this done this year, but I understand that.
It's, we want to be able to have a workshop.
Done right, so.
I'm hoping we can have an October workshop for the planning commission meeting.
Yep, perfect. All right. Yeah, thank you, Director Jones. 12.3, Solicitor, Legal Department.
Nothing this evening, thank you.
Township manager, 12.4.
Thank you, I have several items this evening for your consideration. 12.4.1, this approved, requesting the board approve an agreement with the USGF for well monitoring. This is behind 1905 Pen Book Drive on township property there. There is a water well and they would like to monitor that. The term of this agreement is 10 years with a renewal, you know, of additional 10 years after that period. We do have a 60 day written notice by either party that can terminate the agreement. It's been reviewed by legal and we have no issues as a staff to move this forward.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second to take action on this recommendation by staff. Any board discussion? Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, state so by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Anything else?
No, I'm ready to go to the next item, if that's all right?
Sure.
Okay, what you'll see before you is the temporary parking agreement. Okay, what you'll see before you is the temporary parking agreement. At the Westcoastville Recreation Center, we were approached, as discussed, I guess, at several workshops in the last non, non voting meeting. We were approached by Hamilton Vision Institute on Hamilton Boulevard to see if we could work with them on a temporary parking situation at the Westcoastville Rec Center. The agreement you see before you this evening allows for Monday through Thursday, parking with up to 18 spaces and a $500 a month, you know, payment to the township. We've expressed to leadership there that this is a temporary agreement and we would like to see them move forward with a solution, long term solution for parking on their site. And knowing as we go into this, that if we don't see that through the planning office, we'll work to end our agreement, so.
Okay, I do not have a problem with the resolution as presented, except I do have a concern of, I would like to request that if there is an extension, it come before the commissioners to be able to approve the extension rather than have staff extended for the year that's provided in the, in the agreement. Because we really do want it to be a temporary agreement and would like to encourage them to find alternatives.
Is that three months timeframe okay or are you a little better with it a little longer, maybe like four months or till we bring that back before the board?
I'm going with three months. I just, I would like the date to actually be in the resolution, not just in the notes. This way we can amend it if we want to extend it, but it would have to come back here for change.
Yeah, definitely, I think that's a great idea.
Okay. So moved.
Second. As amended.
We have a motion and a second to approve this resolution as amended. Do we have any board discussion? Public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states of by saying aye.
Aye.
Thank you. 12.4 point three.
Next item you will see before you is an agreement with Dallas Data Systems to work to provide sewer and trash billing for the township and our accounts. We do have already a relationship with Dallas Data as they work to provide our financial software product, which is a Cassell based platform. But you see an agreement, this is for one year with a monthly cost of $4,000 per month to have this service. So this would run until September 31st of 2022. It's been reviewed by legal and I would, you know, recommend that it move forward.
Move to approve, second.
We have a motion and a second, is there any board discussion? Any public comment? Hearing and seeing none, then we'll call for our votes in favor, states so by saying aye.
Aye.
Motion carries, thank you.
And I just have two other quick items, one, and I'm sorry, I forget the time, but just to let everybody know that the staff will be attending the hearing with the Pennsylvania Liquor Control Board over the local regulation of licensed establishments. That is, I believe, September 9th. I forget the time in the morning, I believe, I think it's 11 a.m.
11 a.m.
In this building, in this meeting room. That hearing is conducted by the PLCB and not the township, so we'll be in attendance for that. Also, just wanted to thank staff, you know, emergency management coordinator Ferry, Stan Cup, Vince Tran Gooch, crew chief Randy Smeltzley for being here last evening during the weather event, as well as the public work crew and the fire department. They kind of turned this complex around this morning. We'll be ready to have the pool open tomorrow for the weekend. There was a lot of legwork involved with facilities, also blocking roads, keeping residents safe. So I just wanted to thank them for their dedication to be here and, you know, ensure that the safety of the township residents was their utmost thing. So we were here till a little after midnight last night, so their, their hard work's appreciated. Oh, and Nathan Jones was here as well.
Thank you all.
Hey, I was here.
And Commissioner Higgins.
All right. That's all I have, unless there's any other questions for me. Thank you. Any questions for the township manager? Committee reports, no committees have met, the next workshop is scheduled for the 23rd. And that takes us on to other business, there's no old business tonight, no new, any new business before the board of commissioners tonight. Moves us on to item number 15, board of commissioners reports, are there any reports from the board of commissioners?
The workshop's on the 23rd?
Yeah, it's not the 23rd, that was wrong, 27.
27, correction, 27, thank you.
And I will not be able to attend that.
Okay.
If it was the 23rd.
I'm, I'm, listen, I'm delaying a trip to Vegas till the 28th, so. Saves me a few dollars.
All right, thank you. I guess I'll mention quick, it's before the next meeting that I'm attending that elections board thing to get the open space referendum ballot, right?
I believe that's September 17th.
Okay.
Yep, so I.
Our next meeting is the 16th.
Okay, yeah.
Friday, September 17th at 10 a.m.
All right, yes, the day after I'll be doing that. Any additional public comment?
Only Julie, hi Julie.
There, there was no executive session before the meeting.
If I could, in the board, if it's the pleasure of, of the board, I'd like to have a brief discussion about potential land acquisition. It should take us, you know, several minutes and then nothing substantial.
Okay, so amended, we will have an executive session convening immediately after tonight's board of commissioners meeting to discuss potential land preservation and acquisition of real estate. That takes us on then to item number 18, it is 8:38 p.m. We'll call this meeting in the lower McCounty Township Commissioners adjourned and agrees as to an executive session.
Bruce, will you call myself?
I will.
Okay.